Background like yours, Melissa, that looks so cool.
Um, I could show you how to do it.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, so we are live. It is one oh two and we are live.
Great, thank you.
Wait a minute, Dr. McBoy is here.
Ah, I thought so. I thought he was coming.
All right.
All right, it's one oh three and we are live, Madam Mayor.
There you are. Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the June fourteenth um agenda meeting. Happy Flag Day, everyone. Could you call the roll, please?
Mayor Betty Resch.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sarah Malaga.
Present.
Commissioner Christopher McBoy.
Here.
Commissioner Mimi May.
Present.
And I'll keep an eye out for Commissioner Diaz, who is not here at the moment.
Great, great, thank you very much. Okay, um, I'll just start off. It was good to see three of us at that homeless coalition meeting this morning. And I think we learned some, I know, at least I learned some things about um the agencies and the difference and I um I'm meeting with Mr. Dr. Green on Monday with a couple of the people about what the county is doing and how do we, you know, how do we know about, apparently there's a hotspot in Bryant Park that they go to. Ah, we didn't know that. So I just want to find out what what's more avail. I think knowledge is power. Um, and but it was it was a good meeting. It was very, very informative. People were really happy that three of us from the commission were there. I got a couple of comments about that and I said, well, we certainly have homeless people. Um, just a couple of things. Uh, I'll just start out, what the heck? Um, one, I have gotten a couple of emails from uh and in comments from folks. Apparently, the sheriff has started giving out um tickets for golf carts. And I don't have enough knowledge. I'm I'm gonna ask somehow Captain Bear, you know, we need to get it. What is allowed on what streets? Because if people are riding on the streets and we've just not really enforced it, um, then we need to know that. And so if someone's getting a ticket for something they're not supposed to do, there's not much we can do. So I would like just a clarification of what golf carts are allowed, who's allowed to drive them? You know, because I I was going up South Palm Way the other day and four kids on a golf cart came around screaming around that corner, four teenage boys, and I thought some, it was very, very scary. So I would just like some, um, you know, like a legal update, maybe Elizabeth and and you could work with Mr. Bear. That's just something I thought. Because there's a lot of them. They're fun. People love them. They decorate them. They have so much fun with them, but let's make sure we're doing it in a correct way.
Betty, I was just, that's funny. I was literally just looking into that and some of the golf cart laws changed last year.
Okay.
And regarding um whether or not, because everyone says, oh, it's if you're in seven miles from a golf course, find out if that's true or not, you know, or if it's just folklore.
Yeah, I don't want to put a damper on the fun that people are having with them, but I also don't want us to, you know, we need to know what's going on. So that's my first thing. My second thing is I have been approached um and have been dealing with a resident. I twenty, I'll make this try to twenty-five words or less. Jamie, this is about the gate. There is an ordinance, apparently, that if you have, like, if you want to put a gate across your driveway, if it's manually opened, it is a five-foot setback. If it's electronically opened, there's a twenty-foot setback. Um, the folks that came to me were sent to the, okay, they they own a piece of, one of the last undeveloped pieces of property, Eighteenth Avenue South at the water. Okay, just right there. Number one, there was a five-foot um easement that we had to put pipes in, that that's done, I think. But they they went to the city and they got an, apparently, they got an opinion from the city engineer that it would be fine to put, they want to put electric gate with a five-foot setback. Because they're gonna have to raise their property ten feet, so their driveway is gonna break. So they asked, um, they went to the to this, to the board and the city staff suggested denial of the variance. Now, I went back, it was the May first, uh, it was the May first um meeting. No, it was May first. Yes, May first. And the agenda packet itself talks about the reason, because I thought, what's the difference between electric manual? And apparently, the the concern in the staff report is that with an electric gate, there's gonna be a traffic backup. Now, I don't think on Eighteenth Avenue South, at the end of that dead-end street, traffic backups are a real concern.
I don't know, you know, a lot goes through there.
Right, they they party down there, right? So so here's the thing, and I don't like to be critical, but sometimes I think we are also citizens besides being elected officials. And when you look at something that doesn't make sense, I think that um we should address it. So so he was denied. I mean, he he having a fence, you know, setback, which I just, it made no sense to me. Um, I've spoken with it with Elizabeth and Jamie, and I would like, and I don't know what's involved with this, but I would like, I think this is one of those weird anomalies in our ordinances that we can just say, listen, this doesn't make any sense. And I would like to get consensus to change that, that the setback should be the same, the short setback for manual as well as electric gates. It it's long, it takes more time to open a manual gate. You gotta get out, you gotta, and you get back in there. So I, can we change that? Can I get consensus to change that and help these poor people out? And not just them, but I mean, it just doesn't make any sense. Ms. Malaga.
Thank you, ma'am. Um, I was actually at a red light, so I could raise my hand.
There you go.
I I'm glad that you're bringing this up. There are a lot of things that we um are doing in the city that are antiquated. And I'm, you know, this is just, again, one piece of the puzzle, right? Uh, I completely agree with you. I have people in the alleyways of where our houses and they have manual gates. And to me, like you said, they gotta stop, they gotta get out of the car, they gotta push the gate open. It doesn't make sense, because now that leaves them more susceptible to somebody robbing them while they're, you know, out in the middle of the night, they leave their car running. That doesn't, yeah, it's a safety concern. Um, it's not really anything else besides that. You have a mother and three kids and she's got to get out of the car to push the gate open or ask one of her kids to do it. That just doesn't make sense.
Right, I see Elizabeth. Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. I see Elizabeth's hand is up.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that you all knew that staff is intending to bring forward an amendment to this, but the amendment, the plan for the amendment is to make the manual open gate have the same setback as the automatic open gate, so that anybody
That's backwards.
So that you don't have anybody
That's crazy.
Backing in the road, getting out of their car in the road.
No, that's backwards. That's exactly opposite of what needs to happen. Thank you for letting us.
To give up, to to give up twenty feet of their own property line doesn't make any sense to me. That's ridiculous.
That's ridiculous. That's ridiculous.
Think about it.
Here we are again. People, people are trying to improve their property value versus putting up a crappy fence. And we're saying, you know what, skip putting in that, you know, fifteen or eight thousand dollar fence, you know, we'd rather you not do it and or or do it and give up your property. That doesn't make any sense to me.
No, no.
Is there a difference between residential and commercial?
I don't think, I had a client years ago that had the same issue with this. I bought a off a Batwell and it it made no sense. I mean, it's not like, it's, it's not like we have an Amazon outlaw, you know, that that the trucks are gonna back, I I know, no. I think it's, it wastes space, like like Sarah said, Mr. McBoy.
Um, I tend to agree with the previous comments that that uh if if we were going to change it, let's make them both five feet rather than both twenty. But I would say, do we need to give a voice to William or Ms. Lenahan, whoever? Is there some reason that we are not aware of that argues for the twenty? I think all of us would agree that backing up traffic in our city is very rarely gonna be an issue. Um, and I think the point that's been made that if you're concerned about backing up traffic, the electric one is probably gonna open faster than the manual.
Right. So, and I I did read, I did read the um, the the apparently that when they wrote the ordinance, the concern was electric fences made bad backups. So I think this is a policy decision about making it better for our citizens. Um, making, not using as much land, making it easier. It's not wor, I mean, I don't know what it would, I don't think it's a land development LDR kind of thing. I think it's just, right, it's just a change. Um, I would like consensus to do it. And and I'm sorry if I, if we're usurping staff here, but you staff made, I think, a bad decision on this, on this.
It is in your LDR, so we can work with staff to bring something forward to you all.
Yes, I I have my, you have my support on this.
Sarah, thank you.
Yes, a hundred percent.
Mimi, how are you at with the?
I'm I'm not against it at all, but I also think, well, I don't remember who said it, but it does lend to the greater problem with some of our code that is what I've been saying, that we need to go through it line by line and make sure it makes sense. But that goes toward um uh City Manager Brown was saying, we're, if we do the one-on-one from each of the departments, then we can start to look at what's appropriate, what isn't, what works, what's not, you know, so I think lends to that that other conversation.
And a lot of those things, it's, you know, as you sit and read the code, it's not easy, there's so much of it, right? So one of the, it's maybe a shotgun approach, but I mean, as something as blaring and singular as this comes up, let's fix it. You know, I would like every citizen to look into the code and go, this don't make any sense.
Yeah, but I don't want us to forget the greater job.
Never, no, 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 no.
Picking each one apart, I don't want us to forget that we really owe it to the citizens to go through it.
Yep, and I would encourage citizens to take a look at the code and see if they find anything wacky. Um, okay, that's, thank you very much. I I would like to put that keep that going because I, thank you. Um, the last, uh, one more, two more. Uh, we had said, we talked about this at the last commission meeting, the fifty thousand dollars for the trees. And there was a little confusion, I think, between a few of the people. Chris, did you want to say something?
Uh, I I was just gonna, very quickly on the the last issue. Um, yes, to looking at at our our rules or codes or whatever the heck they are, one that I'm told is in there. I've never researched it. I'm told that we are not allowed to hang laundry in our backyards. And let's get rid of that.
Right, that's a good example. You don't see it from the street, but put it in your backyard.
And when, not right now, but as you get further on the tree board, I can give a little bit of additional information that may be helpful when you're done.
Okay, thank you. Um, we had put aside the fifty thousand dollars and I I brought it up at the last meeting about using it. And there was some confusion that I'm gonna try to, we have two RFQs, and Jamie cleared this up for me the other day, thank you. We have two RFQs going out. One is for the affirm to be our tree people, you know, on a contractual basis. The other one is the overall open space. How do we use our open spaces, greening and things? Correct? Am I right so far, Jamie? Okay, um, there was a rumor out there that we were also maybe doing an RFQ for what to do with this fifty thousand dollars, which there is not an RFQ for that. Um, I have asked the, I don't know, the tree board met last night and I'm sure that they discussed it. But I really want to see this fifty thousand dollars. They, the Nest Group has made a proposal for Bryant Park. These are a couple, as many, as far as fifty thousand dollars can go with soft and hard costs to do a couple tiny forests. And I would like to see that, just like, let's just get going with it. And Jamie, where do we leave that? If you can remember.
So I've not had a chance to get with Dave McGrue this morning, because I've been in some other meetings, but uh a download, and I know Commissioner McBoy was at the uh tree board meeting last night, so I've not gotten an update on what came out of that, but I did speak with um uh Mr. McGrue multiple times yesterday, as well as Jenny Powell and some other folks as well, so uh, just kind of explained kind of what you just went through, the confusion of, um, you know, people thought there was an additional uh RFQ for the fifty thousand for some reason.
Right.
But yeah, we just need to kind of uh work through exactly how we're gonna move through this.
Okay, so I mean, do we have to talk about it or can we just keep going?
Again, unfortunately, I have not had a chance to to get the um the latest from the meeting last night. I had conflict and couldn't attend. Um, so I'm, uh, Dr. McBoy might have an update for us. He mentioned, uh, as he was.
Chris?
Um, yeah, just briefly, uh, uh, thank you, Mayor, for laying out and and City Manager as well. Um, there was some confusion. I think it's pretty clear with the tree board now that the the inclination is to move forward on the Bryant Park stuff with the fifty thousand. The RFQ for planning and planting is separate from that. Not exactly sure what the funding is for, but but that is a little bit slower process. The inclination is to move faster on Bryant Park. Uh, it did come up in the discussion that there does need to be a bit of planning and we sort of, there was a, they they came up with a scheme to try and get a start at that. And then they'll probably bring something back to you, Mayor, to make sure you're, you know, on board with that. And maybe it needs to come to the commission, maybe it doesn't, I don't know. Um, but but the 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 feeling to move forward is strong and and some of the details were starting to get worked out.
Okay, thank you so much for that. And lastly, and usually I don't do much, but on these, but lastly, um, I'm, there was a brief discussion about this on the dais last week or two weeks ago, public comment on non-agended items. There are times, and you know, this has been going on for a long time, where we sit, our staff sits at that back row to do a, you know, either to do a presentation or many times they don't even have to do the presentation because we all just vote to approve. But they sometime, and sometimes there's three and sometime, but sometimes there's a lot. And I feel bad that our staff is sitting there and they have to be back at work in the morning. I I'm I'm thinking, can we consider moving public comment and non-agended items to the end of the of the agenda? Rather than um like even maybe if like more than three come in or more than five come in, because not about content, it's just like, it's, we, let's get some work done before we start. Uh, Ms. Malaga?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, yes, I I I think that that is a great idea. Um, you know, we keep talking about how the fact that we are short on staff and our retention is um is lacking in regards to some of our staff and our departments. And I think that our staff is spread very thin. I think that, um, I agree with you. I also don't think that there should be a reason that if somebody has an item on there, one item, that they should have to work overtime and sit at the back of the room when they could just be on Zoom to answer any questions. Um, I don't, you know. Um, and this actually brings me to to the conversation that I I actually was at an event a couple of days ago with some higher electits. Um, one was a higher county elected, uh, one was a representative and a couple mayors and commissioners from other cities. And just in passing, I had asked, you know, when is your monthly meeting? And to my surprise, Lake Worth Beach is the only city that has three meetings. Most municipalities have one a month. Um, most municipalities don't exhaust staff and electits the way we do. And it's in our charter that we only have to have one meeting. Plus, obviously, we created the electric utility meeting. Um, I would like us to consider going down to one city commission meeting and one electric utility meeting. Madam Mayor, you're shaking your head, no, please just hear me out. This isn't about what one or one or two electits need. When I look at our ordinance and the things that we're doing in our city, just like what you just brought forward with the fence, you know, a lot of things that we do in the city are antiquated and are exhausting on staff. And when we are fighting to get staff to work here and they look at working at our city versus working in another city where they only have to attend one city commission meeting after hours and take that time away from their family, that that may sway them to go to another city. You have staff right now that not only, you know, has to sit in the back of the room and wait for their item, but they're spending sometimes three extra nights, throw in a workshop, throw in a special work session. It's it's a lot to ask a staff to to spend that much time in creating the agendas. So the conversation was interesting to me, um, to say the least. I had asked Melissa to find out what all the other municipalities do, since we're looking at the pay structure and the COLA and all that other stuff. Um, but I really just think that some of the things that we do in the city are antiquated. We are very much a transparent community, transparent commission. And I just think that, you know, as we're talking about staff retention and stuff, we need to look at the bigger pictures. That's all.
Okay, so let's take one at a time. That that's, I think that's kind of a whole different conversation about how many meetings a month, but for the, for my, I'm just bringing up right now. Um, and we certainly talked about that other stuff, but just changing the um, take it to the back of the uh unless like maybe there's just like five or something, because it's just, it's take of it. Mr. McBoy, I see your hand up.
Thank you. Um, in terms of uh attractiveness of the city for staff, I I, you know, obviously, there's some very concrete things, salaries, benefits, and so on and so forth. I think there are intangibles that also serve to attract staff here, and part of that is the flavor of the city compared to other cities. And to the extent that we have cultivated a flavor of being very community-oriented, very public participation-oriented, very transparent about our governing, I suspect that that's a positive for at least some portion of the people applying for staff positions. So um, I would keep that in mind as we think about how we move forward. Specifically, uh, an aspect of that is public comment, and I would be very hesitant to move the public comment all the way to the end of it because you have people who are not paid, they're just residents in the city, and they would then have to sit through the whole meeting to make their public comments in the end. I request two things. One, could we ask, similar to what Commissioner Malaga or Vice Mayor Malaga suggested, um, ask what do other cities do with their public comment? How do they do the balance between keeping the meeting relatively efficient versus still keeping a strong public participation atmosphere and and reality? And one suggestion, I don't know whether any other city does it, but one is a little bit in the direction that the mayor was leaning, I think, is let's put a time limit on the public participation part, um, or maybe time limit on public participation plus liaison comments, something of that sort. Um, or or with presentation, I don't know, some, put some time limits. And if it goes over that, or if it looks like it's gonna go over that, then the overflow gets moved to the end of the meeting. So that way, people have an encouragement. You know, if you get there early and you get your cards in or whatever, you'll be in the first round and don't make the first round, you know, three seconds, you know, make it a reasonable amount of time. Somewhat similar to, you know, what we do on average, and then push the overflow to the end of the meeting. That would be a kind of hybrid solution. Um, and and I would also encourage us to look and see what other cities do. I think many meetings, we don't have that much public comment that it's really an issue at all, but occasionally we do have quite a bit.
Yeah, well, Del Rey has two meetings with him. One, okay, so, um, I mean, that's how I mean, what, what would you consider a reasonable amount of time to set? Chris?
I hadn't thought about it for public participation alone, but I was thinking about um liaison comments plus presentations plus public comment. Those are all, you could argue, not fully business items. They're informational, they're public participation. And maybe for that whole collection, I was thinking something like an hour. How one breaks it down, I hadn't thought that far.
Well, I mean, in terms of, in terms of presentations, I mean, the only, the people that we have coming for, I'll I'll get to you, Sarah. You know, the people that are giving presentations are usually like paid advisors, the um, you know, a representative from Red Cross, a representative from different, or, you know, an official person from somebody else. So I would hate to see them put off because they are also professionals. You know, we don't just have citizens coming up and giving presentations. It's somebody representing some other group. So I I would really just like to, my only proposal is um is about the public comment. Sarah?
Uh, with all due respect, I've had my hand up for a really long time.
Oh, where? Oh, my God, you're up in the window. I'm so sorry. I didn't see you. You're you're, I thank, I apologize.
No, I apologize. I was, because it was before Chris talked the last time, and I was really trying to.
Your hand was up in the little white of your corner. I couldn't see it.
Oh, okay, I apologize. Um, I I think that, I think it would be really kind of difficult to have half of the comments at the beginning and half of the comments at the end. I think that would be really kind of a tough situation to do. Um, but I also do think about the fact that, like, um, Chris said about having people sitting there the whole time. Um, there is the option that they can always put it in um online and it can be read. They can read it online on Zoom, so they don't necessarily have to sit at the commission meeting until the end of the meeting. So there's that option as well. Um, but I do think that there are some things that we could move around. I think anything that somebody's getting paid extra should come first. You know what I mean? Like, we're, we have the, like Davenport, they should definitely speak first, you know, when we have, when we have a paid consultant that we've requested to be there, whether it's for a presentation or whether it's for um, you know, one of the items on the agenda. I think that we should definitely do those first. Um, just, I think that's just smart monetarily, you know, but I also realize, and and anybody that wants to speak on an an agenda item, they're gonna get to speak when we get to that item as it is. You know, so the non-agenda items, putting them at the end is, I don't think, I don't think that that's um I don't think there's anything wrong with that because it's something that if they put it on the, if we put it on at the end and they're speaking at the end, then it could be thought of, okay, well, we can deal with this on another meeting, because it's not like we're supposed to talk back to them anyway.
Right.
Just giving their opinion or saying, could we please think about that? And, you know, I think that we should, we should move those to the end. Um, um, I also kind of agree with moving our comments till after any of the um comments that need to be made by people that are being paid to be there. We can do our liaison reports later. Um, so I mean, I just, if we look at it with the general understanding of doing business first, getting people that we are paying to be there, get living, giving them the option of leaving and not paying them anymore, that's, could be a different way of looking at it as opposed to a time limit on certain things. That's just my opinion.
And I say, I'll, um, and I, along with those, when you say that we're not, but, you know, there are people that we're paying, but there's also like, you know, the head of the Red Cross who wants, you know, I mean, she's, we may not be paying them, but they're, you know, they're professional, they're representing an organization. Or, you know, Mary Lindsay, the Little Free Libraries, why keep her, you know, maybe, so, um, Sarah?
People we have asked to be there, Betty, how's that?
Or have, yeah, yeah, exactly. Well, no, not necessarily, not necessarily, um, people that represent a group, we're doing city business. So a group, somebody that represents something that has something to do with city business, not anybody that wants to get.
City business that's already on the agenda. If it's just random city business, it can wait, because they only get the three minutes anyway, whether they're a group or.
No, no, I'm talking about presentations, presentation.
As I said, presentations are people that we have invited to be there. That's different.
Well, not necessarily, not necessarily. No, no, it's that, no. It's, and I don't mean to contradict you, but they've asked to come, you know, I'm a high on the head of United Way. I'd like to come and dress your, you know, people.
And that actually is something I want to bring up anyway later, so we can wait till it's my turn to talk about it.
Okay, Sarah?
I just wanted to say that I agree to moving the city commission comments to the end of the meeting, um, along with the city manager, unless he feels there's something pressing. Um, I just think that we, we need to get to the meat and potatoes, the business part of our 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 city commission meetings a lot faster. And, you know, in doing so, um, I just, I also think that we should reconsider the amount of contracts um that come before us. Currently, our cutoff for the city manager is fifty thousand. And I think when I look back at all of our meetings, a lot of the stuff that we do is approvals for things that are, you know, a hundred thousand dollars. And, you know, again, talking to other city officials and how antiquated we are, most city officials don't have anything to do with anything less than three hundred thousand dollars. They trust staff, they have, they're, we are policymakers, we're not to micromanage staff, and I feel like.
Can you give us a list of who does that?
Yes, and Melissa's, like I said, I asked Melissa to get a list of who's have, you know, who has how many meetings. Um, but I just, I really think that, you know, we have a great city commission, but we also have great staff. And I know that for me, I I have trust amongst our staff. And I know that we, um, you know, we have a great internal auditor who makes sure that we're always doing our checks and balances. Um, so I just, I think that this is a great conversation and robust, and I I, yes, I I firmly think that we need to move our comments to the end.
Okay, so let's let's try to narrow our conversation, because we only have half, you know, we're halfway through the meeting. Um, the whole money limit is something we can certainly talk about. But I would like some backup as to what other cities are doing, actually. Um, and it's not a question of not trusting, I don't think it's a question of not trusting the staff. It's also goes out with our transparency about what comes to the commission. People see how we're spending money. I think that's as much of it as anything. Chris?
Um, yeah, almost a direct follow from that. Um, we've talked about antiquated, which I think we should be a little careful about the term. we should be a little careful about the term. It's very easy to say that, you know, uh, English common law is antiquated, but we use it quite a bit. So, you know, antiquated doesn't necessarily mean that it's not good. Yeah, um, and some of us may consider ourselves a bit antiquated and
Careful, careful.
I know, well, I'm, I'm, I'm putting myself out there. Um, but, and others may have an opinion about that, but uh, to, to the point, as far as meat and potatoes of meetings, yes, obviously, there are things that are nuts and bolts, decisions that we need to make to move the city forward in one another direction, and we have public meetings so that the public can know what it's about. But public participation, interaction between residents and their governing officials, I think one could argue is a very fundamental American democratic concept that's quite important. And I, I would just be a little hesitant, so my voice would be still try to do a hybrid thing where you, maybe we tighten up the time limits on liaison comments, keep them earlier, tighten up the time limit for an initial batch of public comments that for many meetings will cover all of them, and a few meetings, there will be an overflow to the end of the meeting. That would be my suggestion to keep that idea of participatory democracy, you know, front and center for what we do.
Okay.
My two cents.
Okay, thanks. Um, all good points, all valid points. So do we have consensus to, um, is, is this takes a resolution, Elizabeth, to change the, could we do it though? It's like, let's say we've, let's say we, let's say we say, let's try, let's see how it works, right? Do it ad hoc. Let people know, put the word out there that we're going to do it, but for, like, do it on ad hoc motion at the beginning of the agenda to reorder the agenda? So people Right, that's what I was thinking. So, um, in, you know, instead of doing a resolution before we start, I don't know.
Yeah, but it if I might jump in there, are you suggesting, Mayor, that at each, rather than changing the policy at each meeting, we would say, hey, at the meeting, we're going to push public comments?
No, 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 until, until we do a resolution, no. That would be very confusing if you didn't tell me.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
And I think people should know that that's happening, give us some warning, but, or we can just go ahead and do a resolution, we can always redo it if we need to. So I'm looking for, um, I'm looking for Melissa Quinn's hand up.
Yes, um, so a couple of things. One is, of course, the important thing is that the um, public makes public comment on items on which you are voting. That is obviously the most important, and therefore, if you rearrange things, they'll be able to do that, um, because for the other public comment on whatever they want to talk about that's not agenda related, you're not going to respond anyway. So the, we have, um, since I've been here in eight years, multiple, there have been multiple times where we have, um, changed the rules and, we call it the rules and procedures resolution. So it's been updated multiple times, including changing the order of things on the agenda. So, um, we could do that and have that in July. Um, and uh, just Commissioner Malaga, is she still here? I don't see her. Uh, wait a minute. Okay, I see. She popped off now. She's back on. So, um, I did reach out to all the municipalities regarding the number of meetings a month. There are thirty-nine municipalities. I've heard from twenty. Twelve of them have one meeting a month, eight of them have two meetings a month. I have to reach out to them again to those that haven't responded.
Well, I think we we need to know what meetings, what cities those are. I mean, it's, if it's Gulf or, um, you know, South Palm Beach, they don't really have a lot going on. I don't like the idea of one meeting a month. I'll be honest with you. I don't, I don't like it.
I said two, I said two, one for city commission meeting and one for utilities, and then if we need to put something on one of the other meetings, then we do. But I mean, Palm Beach Gardens is sixty square miles and they have one meeting a month. They can function on running the city on one meeting.
God bless them. Um, I'm, I'm not I mean, we signed up for the job. There's two, there's three meetings.
I understand that, but there's nothing in the ordinance that says that. There's nothing in our, our charter that says that we have to do it. It's just like the minutes used to be detailed because they just always used to be detailed until I brought it forward, and now they're action minutes to move us forward into the twentieth century.
Well, with the electronic, yeah.
So I just think that this is, this is something that needs to be talked about, especially with staff retention. I mean, it's not that we just took the job. It's not about that. It's not just about us. It's about staff, you know, the Fourth of July, our staff is over exhausted. There, we, you know, there's a reason why we're not filling all of our positions. And I just think that we need to look at it as a whole, but we can say
All right, um, I, I just disagree with that. I think, because I, rarely do we have a meeting that's we have a half an hour, I mean, rarely do we not have enough to fill two meetings. You know, maybe a meeting is shorter than the other, but I, I mean, I, I don't see how, I, 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 I'm, I'm not going to care. I just, I disagree. Um, be more convenient, but I disagree. I think our people want to see us more than that. Um, okay, anything else? All right, so that kind of opened up a big can of worms. Can we have consensus just to take this one bite at a time with moving the public, um, you know, either trying, Chris is, you know, we get the first five get in. I can see a lot of elbowing going on, though. If I, to be, people are going to be selling spots, you know, I'm number three. Um, I would like to try to the end. I would like to try it at the end and just see how that goes. Do we have, can I have a, do we vote at these? We don't vote at these meetings.
I don't think we vote. I, I, I don't approve of moving it whole stock to the end. That's just my opinion.
Right, okay. So, um, should one of us bring this up at the meeting to, um, who?
I don't know, I was just thinking, because honestly, if it's just a couple comments, it doesn't really matter. If it's thirty, it's a problem.
Well, that's what I was thinking, the number.
It could be, you know, in, in the resolution right now, it's the mayor, you can switch the order as the mayor. So if you feel there's too many, switch it. If you don't, don't.
Well, that's quite a judgment call on my part to which I do want to be exposed. Thank you very much. Um, no, what if we said, like, okay, so everyone is three minutes, okay? So let's say the first five, so five, fifteen minutes, we got the first fifteen minutes, burning issue, first five people. If you didn't make it in the first five, or, or maybe up to ten, but then we're talking about thirty minutes again. But it's not always that we have that many.
Uh, it's not often that we have that many. I would say ten is a reasonable number and the overflow goes to the end. And uh, I, I, you may be right that there'll be a, what do they call that, scalping or something? You know, I'll sell you, I'll sell you spot number
I got number seven here.
Is it legal to to have citizens speak first, citizens of the city of Lake Worth Beach and non-citizens that want to do? Is that legal? You put them at the end or no?
It, it's not recommended.
Thank you.
Um, equal protection and all that.
Oh, I just wanted to
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, all right, so, all right, do you want to try kind of a half step towards it? You want to say the first ten, and if you don't make the first ten, you're out till the end? Five, seven?
I can, ten, I can support. Yeah, I think that's pretty reasonable.
Um.
And then let's try to keep, you know, maybe if we can bother the city clerk to keep track of how many public comments we get so that we sort of say, hey, they've been typically running about seven, so this seems to be working pretty well, or
Could we do a compromise? Let's compromise, Chris. Mimi says five, you say ten. I'm the mediator. Let's say seven. Twenty-one minutes.
I'll raise you
Come on, Sarah?
Seven, you can't
Look at, Sarah?
Yeah, I'm here. I just, I'm, I'm along for the ride on this one, whatever, you know, the majority thinks.
Seven and a half rounds up to eight. I'll go for eight.
I personally think that we should just make a decision because we are an elected board and we should not just do it on if come maybes. We need to let the public know. This is how we're going to
What we're talking about doing right now, actually, is setting it.
I know, but setting it to I mean, now you're, now you're saying if you're not within the first five or eight people, now you're going to have to sit there to the end of the night? I just don't think that that's, I don't think that's fair. We should let people know, come towards the end, end of the meeting, listen to it on YouTube or listen to it live, or come sit through the whole thing.
So you're for everybody being at the end?
Yeah, I'm for just make a decision and, and set, set policy.
Why make a decision?
Because I think that in doing it, or whoever shows up first, because let's just say what, God forbid, what if, you know, you have seven people show up and four of them aren't even Lake Worth Beach residents? And now we have Lake Worth Beach residents who are stuck at the end and they have to sit there and wait.
They should have gone earlier.
That's not equitable. So that's why I said I'm along for the ride. I personally think that commission comments and non-agenda comments should all be at the end.
Kind of agree.
I mean, to me, we're accessible by email, phone call. I mean, it's not like the only time that people can talk to us is by coming to the city commission meeting.
Well, it's obviously a different approach that they're taking when they do come. Um, I, well, I, I mean, if there's three people that want to make a public comment and making them wait to the end of the meeting, which would only be fifty, you know, nine minutes of our time, I think is a little
So why don't we leave it how it is and see what happens?
Do what?
We could just leave it how it is and see what happens.
Well, but we end
Leave it how is, how it is, and then what? Just make the commission liaison and the city manager at the end?
Could do that, because that's something we can control, because we know how many of us there are, and we know how long our reports generally are. That's something that's predictable.
So we could just say, usually it's thirty to forty-five minutes between the five of us and the city managers, so save that to the end?
I'd be okay with that.
But I, I still think public comments
It would save time and it wouldn't put the citizens out. It's something we could change.
Yeah, so we could change us, the city manager, and the city attorney, since the attorney has to be there till the end anyway.
So if we have forty-five people showing up saying
Plus, if there's something you want to talk about that happened during, you could
No, Mayor, and then like you said, if there's forty-five people who show up, we can just say, due to time constraints, you know, we'll be moving public comment to the end.
Or the other option, Mayor, remember, we learned that you can, you can shorten their time as long as you shorten it for everybody. You could say due to the fact that there are seventy-two people here, everyone's going to get one minute, not three.
All right, all right, you know, I don't have, I have no dogmatic ideas about this. I just think we should get our staff going, so we'll do, so let's go with that for the time being. Leave public comment at the beginning, put up us at the end. Um, and see where it goes from there.
And a mayor?
Yep.
I was just going to say that, um, the large amount of public comment we've had at the last two meetings, they did say that they intended to come to every single meeting.
Mm-hmm.
So just put it out there because
We've been, we're being We were the, we're the only city that that's happening at, by the way. I, we, me and I were at the Florida, the Palm Beach County League yesterday. I said, is everybody getting this, you know, onslaught of, which we've made very clear our position? Um, no, nobody else is getting it. There's another group that is dogging on a completely different subject, but not this group at all, and I just think, what the heck? Um, so, all right, if we have, if we have the same I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Melissa, I'm sorry.
They said they're going to keep coming until they get what they want.
Well, let's see how that goes. Now, the other thing that somebody suggested at the meeting at the lunch yesterday was like, at sometimes the commissioners say, if, you know, if you're here on this issue and you agree with the person that just spoke, raise your hand, and everybody doesn't have to speak, but then you have a threat of uh, Elizabeth, you know, you know, that legal stuff.
Yes, the legal stuff.
That stuff. So, all right, so I think we've made a, um, a decision. I'll see how it goes. I, I, I will not be what, no. The, the whole, I, I, I hope they have a change of heart because I don't want our city to be the only city that is constantly being dogged about international affairs. So, all right, let's move on. It is, we, we've taken a lot of time on this, which I really appreciate. Does any, we have about fifteen minutes. Does anybody have any other? Nope, Mimi's going to hand up.
I have, I have quite a, a couple, so I won't take up forever. But the first question I have in this is, um, uh, honestly, a request for you, Mayor, when you are doing the vote, can you slow down?
Sure.
Because I feel that when I can't hear who voted yes or no, I can't and I know that it's just, it's too fast for me.
Okay.
I don't want to have to go to the point where we ask each person yea or nay, but
Okay.
I'm not getting my voice
That's easy.
Um, the second thing is the, I went to the, you know, I'm learning new things now, and we also went to the, um, Lega Cities, um, webinar the other day, and I asked a question that was, is there any sort of, of board that a city could put together that would not meet in the sunshine? And the answer pretty much was no. And that worries me because our education task force is not in the sunshine.
It's not a city board.
Well, I asked if, even if you call it a task force, is it, should it be in the sunshine? It's created by the city. It's, the people are appointed by the officials. There is no official task. They're not at this point reporting back to us. So I'm very concerned about the, and it's not just that board. I just don't want to be out of line with any of our boards, and I don't want, I mean, it was very clear that it was pretty illegal.
I, I beg to differ, although I'm not the lawyer, but when the task force was proposed and set up, we clearly vetted it with our attorney's office and said, can we do this? And a distinction is made between city advisory boards and what they can do and can't do, and other things like a task force. And to my knowledge, I mean, I would be surprised if our legal department told us incorrectly that we could do something that's not legal.
And maybe they did at that point. I'm just looking at the, what's happening with the board itself and thinking, I just want to double check. So, I mean, I'd like the, the attorney to look into that and make sure that it's okay that it's not in the sunshine.
We will look into it.
Thank you. Um, I mean, I kind of want to look at all, I mean, it was, it was the summertime. I remember when we, we went through and everybody applied to be on the boards and, and commission appointed everybody to the board. So that's kind of coming up anyway. Um, I would like to look at the boards and to see and make sure that they are as even as you can get regarding, um, appropriateness of residence requirements, appropriateness of the actual mission of a board, the purpose of the board, who, what the liaison's role is on the board, as well as what is, what are the expectations of report back to the commission? So I, because I was talking to the tree board, and they were, they did not know what their, their liaison's role was. And, and they, they wanted me to clarify, and I said, well, I, I, I can't do that. They're like, well, he's not doing his job. Well, and I said, well, what is it? Is it clarified in the creation of the board, in the description of the board, what the liaison's job is? Are they just there to monitor? You know, are they the expert? I don't know, and I think that we need to look at those boards individually or, and as a whole to make sure that they're, that they're doing what, what we want them to be doing as a, as a commission and as a city. You know, I'd like the, the citizens to look at it and say, is this, is this really representing us in the way that we intended it to?
Uh, I'm trying to put my hand up, but it's, oh, wait, here we go.
I blocked you. Your hand
Yeah.
I blocked you. Uh, yes, Chris?
Um, I think it's not a bad idea to periodically review the boards. As someone who's been involved with the boards, various of the boards for better than a decade, um, decade and a half, I guess, I would add this caution, that there was a period during the sort of ten-year run that ended about twenty twenty-one where participation, resident participation in boards dropped way off. And there was a frustration, and I, my sense, which might not be correct, but my sense was it was that there was sort of a energy rating aiding out from the commission that, uh, you know, kind of the guerrilla approach, I'll knock your opinion out of you if I need it. Um, it, it was kind of the citizen board, resident board unfriendly. And I think we made some very sensible changes in the appointment process. It became more public, more democratic, more all of us putting our heads together. I think that was a big improvement. Um, so I would be cautious. I would also say in the specifics of the tree board, I can tell you that there has been frustration with that, with members of that board that extends across many, many different members and has, that frustration has been there for a long time. And I think And I think, I don't think looking at the written stuff is going to enlighten you a whole lot. I think it takes a little bit more digging. And maybe, you know, I'll venture a volunteer opinion that we are not as a city very serious about trees. We're doing some things now that's good, but in terms of tree maintenance, tree protection, we don't, we're not very serious about it and that tends to be part of the frustration for tree board members. Um, other cities.
We're only as good as what we write down. Honestly, because if you look at the, if you look at the mission of the board, you really should be able to tell what each person is supposed to be doing. You know, and I think that you can't just go with the tradition lowercase t. We've always done it this way, or there's always been frustration. We need to look at it going forward. How do we make the most of the volunteers' time as well as the liaison's commitment to those boards?
I, I couldn't agree more on make, you know, make the most use of the time and expertise that board members bring. So, you know, I, I would say maybe some retrospective looking at what seems to be the bottleneck and what can we do to get around whatever bottlenecks there are.
Well, it's the, I mean, the PNC, the, some of the, the advisory boards are fairly well spelled out. I think where we're getting mushy is tree board, education board.
Waterboard.
Waterboard. That, that sounds awful.
That, that, that's an unfortunate name.
Um, so, um, but no, I think you're right about those. The, the other ones are pretty much, this is what happens and we can look at them. But I think as far as what's, you know, what, what's the status of the education board? What are they doing? How is it working?
In the mission statement.
A little mission statement and a little follow, you know, follow-up. Um, and I hope it's all working great. I want all to, uh, the more citizens, I mean, that was what we did, you know, three years ago, Chris, is just like, really get a lot more people involved, you know, for better or for worse. So, um, so can we start with those, with the tree education and H two O board?
I approve of the name.
Thank you. Aqua board, the Aqua board. That sounds like a certain word.
That sounds much more in keeping with us.
You know, come, maybe we should sort of look at those three because those would be the, the most spongy, Mimi?
I, I'm okay with that.
Okay. So, um, how do we do that? How do we bring that about?
Uh, Jamie's got his hand up.
Jamie's got his hand up.
Oh, Madam Mayor, you actually just, uh, asked the question I was just about to ask all of you. How would you like to bring this forward? Um, or how would you want to review this process? Is this part of a workshop? Is this part of a special meeting?
How about a, a agenda item of a discussion regarding?
Just for, just on a regular commission meeting, we're gonna add this to a future meeting?
Just to get it out there, start. If we know what we're going to be talking, and we're now talking about it, we might bring some more solid ideas to the table.
So we're looking at the waterways board, the education task force. What was the other one?
Tree.
Tree, okay.
Madam Mayor?
Tree and landscape, whatever we call it now. Melissa, I see your hand.
It is tree and landscape board. And just so you know, the ordinance was redone on August first of last year.
Right.
So there's a lot in there. Maybe what I'll do is email it to all of you. Do not reply all. And you can look it over because it does specify some things.
Okay. Great, thank you.
There is nothing in writing for the education task force.
Right.
Was never, it was just done verbally. And it's the waterways, not the waterboard, the waterways board, which was also done um last year.
I mean, I'm all for citizen involvement, but it has to have a purpose.
Right, right. Okay, great, thank you.
I will email, um, I'll email the tree and landscape board ordinance and the waterways board resolution to everybody. So you can look at it, but they're pretty recent since they were done last year.
Hey, we're.
Education task force.
There was never anything in, in writing. There's no ordinance. There's no resolution. It was just discussed at a couple of meetings. Then there was consensus and that was it. I'm sorry, what?
Need to write their own so we can at least look at something.
That's interesting.
Because I believe Erica Whitfield wants to have it formalized. I haven't heard that from her. I've heard it through the grapevine, so I don't know if that's true or not. But um I'll just leave it there.
Okay.
Yeah. And, and we need to look at the purpose too. I mean, it's kind of with the, with the waterways and with the education. Um, what is the purpose of it within the city? Because we can't do a lot with policy when it comes to waterways that we don't own or schools we don't run. So.
No, but, but if I might, um, we have had a long history as a city that one of the downsides in terms of our attractiveness has been that unfortunately our schools have had not had as good a reputation. And there was a strong feeling that although we are not the school board, we have no funding, we have no policy influence, we can indicate a lot of interest in supporting our schools as best that we can as a city. And the mayor's been very active with that with the high school. And the task force was established with that idea of let's develop liaisons to each of the schools that are member of the task force. And let's let them communicate with each other easily, which I think was the logic behind not making it a, uh, a city of board. And let's, it, at least it has some support from the commission. It can give a presentation to the commission. It indicates a reflection that the community and the commission want to support education as best as we can.
Yeah.
I think that's a pretty reasonable goal.
Well, and let's just see what they're, let's see what they're up to. Let's find out what they're up to, what they've actually, it's been three years now, so let's get a little.
Asking them for a presentation sounds like a very reasonable idea.
I'd rather ask them for a state, a mission statement.
Right. Um.
I mean, and I agree with you a hundred percent, Chris, and I think there should be one. I just want it to be specified and spelled out. That's all.
I, but I think that might have been part of the sunshine issue. I'm, I'm not exactly sure. We'll have to revisit that.
Yeah, I mean, I think it should be sunshine if it's gonna be.
Well, I, we're gonna revisit that.
Okay, all right.
Um, okay, we've got, Chris, you've got no time. Do we want to spend a couple of extra minutes? Chris, you have a lot or?
Um, we've dealt with some of them. Um, so very quickly, I, I want to thank again Commissioner Malaga for her support a number of meetings ago now, um, for the thought of putting some of our ARPA resources toward the the broader area of affordable housing, homeless. Um, if we can do it, at least I'm putting words in her mouth, I think, on that part. But if we can do it in a way that has a long-lasting benefit um to our city as a whole and to the homeless population, I think uh, I, I believe that was somewhat the intent and um, I'm hopeful that there may be some opportunities on that. So, uh, thank you again for that support. Um, a, a real short one. I get a lot of complaints, have for many years, that our video of our meetings is subpar compared to other cities. Um, that you really can't see who's saying what very well. And uh, when I was doing the meetings by Zoom, I have to say that hmm, they have a point there.
Yeah, I agree.
So, uh, I would like that to be a priority that we do, you know, apparently, you know, speaking of adequate, I think there is technology that lets it follow who's speaking. Um, and uh, zoom in or something or other. So there may be ways, I don't know whether it's manual, automated or whatever, but let's see if we can't do a little better. Um, and my last one is, uh, I had asked Legal for an opinion on how do we put items on the agenda? What came back, if I understood it correctly, and I think I did, is that each of us has the right to put some, to request that something be put on the agenda and a reasonable expectation that that will happen. Um, and so I have asked for a informational presentation on humanitarian crisis in Gaza. And I um would like to be told that although I have a right and a reasonable expectation that that will somehow be overruled. And I'd like an opinion from Legal, whether that is inconsistent with our rules.
I would object to it. It's not, we have city business. We, then let's, then next week, let's talk about uh Sudan. The week after that, let's talk about Ukraine. That is not our business, Chris. I, whatever my personal feelings may be, that is, I think that's inappropriate.
But it leads the bigger issue of, of who, of the presentations anyway. And I was talking to the um city manager and the assistant manager about that. Where I think that the, if you want, if I wanted to put a presentation or I wanted a group to come do a presentation, I think it would be, it would make sense to have it be vetted at one of the pre-agenda meetings first. And if a couple of people wanted to, to hear it, then we go ahead and do it. But if it's just me, I want to do a presentation on puppy dogs and you guys don't care, well, then I shouldn't be able to bring that forward.
And also, I think it should be somebody that has a, a, an official role with an organization.
Yes.
Um, that has something to, some bearing on, direct bearing on the city business. I don't understand why that's a problem.
I agree.
I, 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 I'm looking for clarification on the legality of our rules. My understanding of the rules is none of the things that have been currently raised are part of our rules, that yes, each commissioner and mayor can raise, ask for something to put on the agenda unless it, somebody objects, or unless it isn't by this kind of organization, or unless it's a topic that other people don't think is relevant. That isn't what our rules are. My understanding is the rules is that we can each make a request. And uh, if we want to change the rules, we can do that, but as to my knowledge, that is what our rules are. Now, I, I certainly am willing to be corrected, but I ask for a written clarification and that's what I received.
And I really, I, I have to question you, you know, I why you think it is appropriate to spend city time on something that we have no control over. If we start, I believe it's opening the floodgate. I think, I believe that there needs to be a direct nexus between what they're talking about and the city of Lake Worth. Either it's we're the United Way and we want to get money, or it's the Girl Scouts and we have Girl Scouts in Lake Worth, or it's something not, I have, we are not, we're not Hyde Park. We're not a public forum for issues beyond our city. We're our city business. And I just think, I'm, I'm, I'm a little just not disappointed, but I'm a little concerned that you think that we should be having international issues on our city agenda.
A hundred and sixty-five other cities in the United States agree with my thought process on it, that this is an issue.
And run for, I mean, I don't, I, I, I don't, if, if Sarah, uh, Mimi, you say what you want to say. I just, I've said what I said.
My hand is up. Thank you, ma'am. It's not just that, you know, I'm, I'm gonna go with this, that when you bring PTSD forward, it's affected me. When you bring um gun violence forward and it's a proclamation, it, it, it affects people in our community. When it comes to things that are religiously driven in, in history, we have not encroached on that. I am really upset that we're still talking about this. We didn't take a stance with Ukraine and Russia. We're not taking a stance on Haiti, which is our neighbors, which, you know, we have a very large amount of Haitian population. And not just that, we have a lot of people in our city staff that are highly upset that this is, this conversation is still happening. And I've said it once, I'm going to say it one more time. I am not ever going to support anything in regards to this because I have my own personal feelings. I don't believe this is just more divisiveness for the city. We are trying to unify our city, not divide it. And I am a hundred percent, I will recuse myself. I am not interested in having this conversation. It doesn't mean that I'm for or against. It just means that I, that's not my job as an elected.
Right. I, I mean, yeah, I, I would ask you to rethink your position on this, Chris. I really do. I think that the divisiveness of this, you know, what, you know, we have, we have it's just, number one, it's not, it's a can of worms. International stuff does not belong on a city meeting. You've got people, you've, we have Jewish citizens, we have Jewish staff. So if we come up and say that, you can't take a side on international issues. And I would really respectfully ask you to rethink your position on this. And not just push it because a hundred and sixty-eight other cities do it.
A, a member of the war cabinet in Israel thought it was important enough that they resigned for it.
And he's in this greatly, he's involved with it directly. It's not, Chris, if you follow every national, every internet, I mean, the, the horrible things going on across the globe are horrible. But it's not our job.
And, and, and Dr. Myboy, I want to say I, I love your enthusiasm for this, but if this is the kind of stuff that you want to take on, I recommend that you go into higher politics because this is not something you do on the local level. This is something that, you know, we are here to serve forty-six thousand people, seven square miles, not worry about Venezuela, Istanbul, and everybody else. We have got to worry about our own city and the things that are affecting our city on a daily basis. That's why we're elected.
So.
And there are plenty of people who have, who are residents who have a different view of that, who do feel that it is important because our country is very actively involved in this one and we are part of that country.
Also have people on the other side, sir. You have people who are extremely on the other side. And you just, you can't, you can't divide the city. You have to say we understand that there's a conflict, we empathize with everybody, we love everyone, and we're here for everybody. That's it.
Yeah.
That's a very Pontius Pilate approach. I don't happen to think that's the correct one. I would never say.
Because this, because this particular thing appeals to you and you're being, I don't know, there's a lot of pressure to take a stand. But there's a lot of horrible things going on in the world for the past three years that I have not heard you say, I want to stand up for the Myanmar people. I want to stand up. It's just inappropriate. So I, if, if it comes, I would vote against doing anything like that. I would not support that. And I think using our staff time, our personal time for an international thing that we have no, what I do in my private life is private, but what we sit up there as a commission, we are not an international organization. That's the end.
And I thought, I also thought that we said that we were not going to have staff do anything that we did not have consensus on because that's why we started these pre-agenda meetings, because things were just getting added to the agenda that we all didn't have consensus for. So with, you know, with, with all due respect, again, I just, I will recuse myself. I'm not gonna not vote a yes or no. I will recuse myself from this.
You can't recuse yourself.
Why can't I?
Because you, Elizabeth?
You have an obligation. You have an obligation to vote on every matter that comes before the city commission for a vote unless you have a conflict of interest that is defined under the ethics statute.
A very specific.
Palm Beach County ordinance.
Okay, well, I will look at the ethics.
Madam Mayor, just to let you know, it's two oh nine.
Yeah, um, you know, Chris, I don't know what you want to do with this. I would ask, respectfully ask you to rethink your position. I know there are people in the community very passionate about this. We totally understand that, but um, I would ask you to reconsider and take it to the national level. So, um, I think we're out of time, beyond out of time. See you all Tuesday.
See you all Tuesday.
Thank you. Take care. Bye-bye. Thank you, everybody. Oh, wait, no, stop. Jamie, your hand's up. These light backgrounds and these light hands, I don't know.
Uh, I did have one quick, I had a couple of things, but I can save that for next week, so I'll do the important one. I know you guys all had a chance to um tour over at the Osborne Center and the head start facility and everything. Uh, I, I mentioned before that our, our attorney's office had been working on a draft, um, lease agreement and all that. I just, I don't know where we're going with that. I provided the information as far as the um, the makeup of the students who actually attend that early childhood learning program. So we know the percentages and everything now. Do you want me to continue um working with the attorney's office as far as moving forward with that, that new lease that would go into effect September first as the current one um that was extended, ends on August thirtieth? What do we want to do now that we have the, the percentages and all the additional information? You guys have actually done the tour now.
And they're willing to pay the two thousand a month?
Correct. That had already been discussed with Dr. Serato and everything and then uh, increasing each year. So it'd be the three-year with the additional two, one-year renewal. So essentially a five-year um lease is what we'd be looking at doing.
Well, I mean, they're doing a good job. I mean, you know, I had, it was great to, to, you know, to tour it. Um, what, what's everybody's thought? I mean, the, the, the um alternative would be to open it up. Is that the alternative? To open it up to whoever wants to see, who wants to use it? Mimi?
Um, maybe because my thing is blurry. You can't see my hand. I don't know. Um, I think that we're unfortunate, fortunately or unfortunately, just is what it is, is that the renewals in August. So there's no time to go out for another, another bid right now. And I think from visiting, they're doing a great. So it, there's no time to go out for another, another bid right now. And I think from visiting, they're doing a great job. Would I like them to be, um, catering to all of Lake Worth Beach, um, children? Absolutely, but it's been brought to my attention that that, it's a federal program, so that's not an option. Um, I would like to look at, um, as was suggested, how do they advertise towards. Uh, Lake Worth Beach, um, residents. And I, you know, if we do the three year now, we can always then look at, is there something we wanna switch after three years? But I think for right now, we should continue, we should go forward with this.
Thank you. Chris, your hand is up?
Yeah, I couldn't, technically wouldn't let me do it. Um. Uh, I, I would, I'm very much in favor. I think they're doing excellent work, uh, both the tour I had now and one last year. Um, and if we were to put it out for other agencies to do a head start program. They would be subject to exactly the same federal requirement that they cannot tell people, you can't come if you don't live here, there, everywhere. Um, so it, it, it just is what it is, that whoever gets there. If we want to encourage them to advertise, I think the word gets out very quickly. It's a long time program. Parents in the community know about it. Um, so, yeah, but I, I have no problem with the idea of encouraging them to advertise.
So there's consensus to go forward with this lease?
Yeah.
Two hundred dollars, okay.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, cause, uh, we obviously, once we get the draft lease agreement together, we get that to them. Um, their legal will look over it, basically get everything signed, so then it'll be on an agenda in the future, um, for you guys to basically, uh, approve. And then we'll have everything in place, so come September first, it automatically goes into.
And as far as the kitchen is concerned, I could come back to Jamie with the idea about the kitchen, cause that big kitchen is so big. And apparently they're already working on setting up a kitchen for both sides, so that's, you know, and I, I did express my displeasure. At the fact that we're covering up with drywall, some very beautiful tile. I do not understand it. I'm not happy about it. I think it's a, it's, it's disrespectful of the building to put bland drywall on top of this gorgeous, absolutely perfect condition. Tile. That was just for the sake of updating things. I'm sorry, I, I don't like it.
And, and just so everyone's aware, it's not tile, it's concrete block.
Whatever it is, it's beautiful. It's shiny, it's beautiful, it's there. I mean, I, you, as I said to you, I mean, that big, we're gonna update the floor in the big room, which really needs a good cleaning and a good polishing. But apparently we're bound in it, you know, we won't, which made me feel like, okay, I need to pay a little more attention when we do these appropriations. Cause updating the building, I thought the things were not working. We need, you know, stuff, not just zhuzhing it up a little bit, which. Um. I just think it's a shame that we're, that we're doing that to that building. But who cares? That's what I say.
Madam Mayor?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I don't see Commissioner, uh, Vice Mayor Malaga anymore, but.
Right.
Um, I believe we were gonna maybe talk about canceling the July second meeting.
Why?
Because.
Give, uh, staff a break, cause it's right so close to the fourth, I think.
Correct, cause a lot of people go away. And I'll tell you right now, there's nothing on that meeting currently.
Alright.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. I have no objection to that, particularly if it's an empty meeting.
I mean, yeah, that's fine.
Okay, alright.
I, I, I'll tell you on record, I am not in favor of going down to one meeting a month.
Thank you. Neither am I.
And I'm actually in favor of increasing the pre-agendas so that there's one free before each meeting.
But I agree with you on that. There used to be two a month and it was really how these, cause this is the only place we could have these kinds of conversations.
Yeah.
Where we could actually.
Talk to each other.
Well, okay. So, um, yes, thank you, Melissa, and go ahead with whatever you have to do to cancel that. Okay? Have a great weekend, everybody. Stay dry, keep our pumps pumping and our streets dry and.
And sea level low.
Sea level low. Pump that water out. Alright, thank you.